We're going to call the Executive Committee of the Hall to order. And please, Caldwell.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Shulkey.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Ambrahl.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Chair Pershant Snyder.
Here.
Seven present, zero absent.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Do we have any public comment this morning? All right. Bridgette, would you go ahead with your report, please?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I brought my frog with me today. In here somewhere. Okay. As the year is winding downward with the holiday and everything in November, we were a little bit slower than normal as far as, you know, unusual activities, but business is normal. The jail, we did have a total of 173 inmates. You'll notice the federal marshal number did go up slightly. Pinecrest Census is at 52. Our Activities Director out of Pinecrest has been moved into a full-time position just this past year, and that's really been wonderful for the residents. They've been able to move on a lot of different activities that they maybe didn't have the opportunity to do before. So that's really made a difference for them. Mark, did you have a question?
Yeah, going back to the jail real quick.
Yeah.
Seems like is our new sheriff, as opposed to past sheriff, it seems like the count in the jail is staying right around the 170. Am I correct?
Yeah.
They pretty much have the same outlook on capacity and everything.
Yeah, if you look at the charts, the data, and it is pretty consistent. I'd say anywhere from like 160 to 175, 180, and that range has been pretty, pretty stable. Yeah. This time of year, we always have higher number for local inmates, too.
Right.
So.
They want to stay warm.
Well, absolutely.
Must be the good child.
It's warm in there.
Must be the good child.
Yeah.
It's warm in there.
Thinking about activities over in the jail under community corrections, pretrial programming is very busy. Right now, there's almost 120 people on pretrial assessment, which includes, you know, that's an opportunity for people who are still working and are employed to actually be able to go to work instead of sitting in the jail and have a need for even more staffing when their offenses are nonviolent and they can potentially even seek treatment for some of the reasons that may have gotten them in trouble in the first place. Moving on to equalization, did you all get your tax bills?
Yes.
If you didn't, I'll figure that out.
Thanks a lot, Bridgette.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I did have a quick question on that. Didn't know what I don't know or something like that at the conference, was it?
Mm-hmm. There's a lot of things about equalization people don't know. And that is really what the presentation was, the details about how equalization works, what should assessors know from an equalization department county level.
I got another question, too, on the tax billing. The, I was at a town, Lee Township meeting last night, and somebody were asked, some people have multiple properties, and they will get, they will give them each one a separate letter for each property. And they were wondering, well, what, they were talking to the township, hey, do we need to do some of this so if they have, instead of getting multiple letters, that they could be combined?
No.
And I didn't.
No. I mean, their properties are, they're not going to be combined in one envelope because everything goes out by parcel number. So if they've got multiple properties, they have multiple parcel numbers. So they all have to be mailed separately.
So the township can modify that. They can say they don't want the county to stuff them, and then the township can hand go through them and come back.
And that's what I thought. I wanted to make sure if there was any other software.
Yeah, we're not, we are not hand stuffing envelopes at the county.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know. It was more whether, these days with software capabilities, whether they could modify their program to.
I mean, if that's what you're referring to, Larry, is having multiple bills in one envelope.
Sorry, bud?
If you're talking about having multiple bills in one envelope, that's, you know, that's one issue, as Jeanette mentioned, the townships can manage. But if you're talking about combining the parcels onto one bill, no.
No, no, I don't think that would have been the thing.
Yeah, because the townships have the option to pay for the service and have the county electronically stuff them, or they can say, nope, I'm going to stuff them myself, which Edenville used to do, and they would go through with the multiples and put them in and save some money, but a lot of labor intensive.
Yeah, I, we, I get four bills from Edenville, and they always come in separate envelopes. So I.
Oh, Karen used to combine them.
Oh, yeah.
Because I used to help.
Yeah. So those are, it's a good question.
Mm-hmm.
Good question. I just want to make sure you all got one. Okay. Emergency management, quite a bit going on with the Infrastructure Committee and the U.S. Army Corps, and that hydrology project, Jennifer has been staying involved in that. I have as well, but she's, you know, I hope, my goal is to have her attend those meetings on a more consistent basis because my schedule is a little bit more in a state of flux. I was at the meeting right after our board meeting last week about, or was it just last week? I think so. Regarding scope for the project and potential increase in the earmarking and appropriation. So if we can get that to happen, we may be able to extend the timeframe for the project and do a little bit more.
Give a shout out also, I thought, the review of this year's exercises and the upcoming, they did a nice job in that, in preparing as well, which was out at the Homer Township.
Oh, yeah, thank you. In finance, you would have all gotten open enrollment forms. We talked about this last meeting, and those were due last week. You also would have gotten, well, you will be getting before the end of the year, your final copy of the adopted budget. So you don't have to keep the recommended one. We'll take it back and recycle it if you would prefer, but you will eventually get a final copy of that. It is a busy time of year in finance, particularly because we're getting ready for year-end closing process and also trying to make sure that we have everything prepped for the audit, which will be starting probably April, April, first week in April. Appreciate Jessica's help and Beth Haskell and Jen Anway for co-chairing this year's United Way campaign. Jessica also, through the Young Leaders Program, helped coordinate a food drive with everything happening at the federal level, potential cuts to SNAP benefits. So our, our employees stepped up and had a pretty full vehicle to take over to United Way, so kudos to the employees here. I just want to call out the IT team for some behind-the-scenes things. I did a little bit in the report. So this last week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and I was in here on Saturday, the new server room needed to be activated, so to speak, so we had to shut down all the servers and transfer everything over, which sounds like not a big, big deal, but it is a really big deal. The IT staff was here all day on Saturday until probably six or seven o'clock at night, and with a few minor hiccups, everything went as planned. So that was a big hurdle, and it, I'm just really grateful that they were willing to commit the time to be here to make sure that it went smoothly. Health Department, if you haven't noticed, people are sick. I am not sick. That's what I keep telling myself. Just a few allergies here. But there is a lot of influenza and COVID going around, so if you are so inclined to get your vaccine, we'll make sure we can take care of that for you on the second floor. And we just got to let someone in the Health Department staff know, still doing a search and have application windows open for filling Suzanne's position. Her last day will be the 19th of December. She has agreed to stay uncontractually into the new year for negotiations, and if, you know, we need some assistance on a few things until we fill the position. Let's see, talked about that with IT. Mosquito control. Carl was successful in finding a replacement for Joyce. Her last day was last week. She did have a very nice retirement celebration at the Red Oak in Sanford. Will Craven is going to be the new operations planner. I did have a quick chance to meet him. Seems like a very nice young man. And, you know, Joyce was able to be around, they were here together, so she could train him a little bit before she retired. So that is very nice. We will have our insecticide bid opening for January 7th. Every year I talk about that, I feel like it's, was just yesterday that I talked about the bid openings for mosquitoes. Parks and Rec, quite a bit going on. We did, for those of you that sit on the Parks and Rec Commission, you're probably well aware that Patrick was contacted by the State of Michigan about the scoring that our grant application had. With a few additional modifications to that grant application, we were able to raise the score up to, from 265 to 335. Anything over 315 will get funded, so that's good for us. That has to do with the refurbishing of the parking lot that was torn up in Sanford, at Sanford Lake Park. That's probably the most of it.
Thank you.
I would, I would think that's probably it unless someone's got a specific question.
I just, going back to the Health Department, just wonder if maybe, and I hate to take away, but maybe if in the next meeting or two, seems like Fred could maybe come down, just give us an update on what's going on. It's the sick season usually.
Sure.
Fortunately, we've not had to meet with Fred a lot lately, and that's a good thing. But maybe just to find out what's going on, what the trends are with vaccines.
Uh-huh.
And also, which brings me, and I don't think we have to have a meeting on this, and I, and I'm using the word, I know it's not defibrillator, but those heart things, where it's case somebody has a heart attack, what are they called out there?
AEDs.
AEDs. I wonder if, I don't know how you do a, but I'm sure not 100% of our employees know how to use them in the building. And even, maybe even if we could have a countywide, something as simple as an email put out to every employee, so if somebody does pass out and then the guy standing next to them doesn't know what to do with that thing, I know they have instructions on them, but it may not be bad to send an email, tell employees about where they're located, how they're used, just a thought, instead of having somebody have a heart attack and somebody not know how to use them.
And we have done that in the past. It's certainly a good idea to refresh everybody's memory. Not all of them are in place at the moment because of the construction being in the middle of the construction. So they won't be replaced until, they won't be replaced until all of the wall finishes are done in those areas. But the Health Department does have the one in their office area. And most everybody knows to pick up the phone and call, but it's certainly a good reminder.
Yeah.
So.
Exactly.
I can even talk to Patrick about that. He chairs the Safety Committee, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Another shout out to Patrick. He's just doing a fantastic job there at the Parks and Rec. How he's handling things ahead of stuff, it's impressive to see, so a great selection to be the director of that, so.
Yeah, he is doing, I think that last Friday, they had interviews for potential replacements for his position, for the Parks Manager position, his old position.
I see.
To fill.
Because I see it's still posted.
Yes. Well, and they'll keep it open, Larry, until they actually find someone who has offered the job and accepts it. And then they'll close it, because you never know, someone might turn it down after they make the offer, and maybe they got a better offer somewhere else. So we'll just keep it up until it's actually filled.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Are there any question, any other questions for Bridgette?
Just real quick, the construction, it says January 1st. Is that realistic?
Put it out in the universe, Jim, yes. January 1st. That's when it's going to be.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Yes.
Thank you for that honest, sincere answer.
I was putting Christmas Eve out into the universe, but that doesn't seem to be working. So yes, let's say January 1.
Thank you. Civil Counsel, your report?
January 1st is like a great date. Well, the, lots of contract-related activity at the end of the year. I've been talking to Haley. She's been very helpful, providing information, and she learned her job well, I think, from Denise.
She's doing a good job.
Really, there's not, nothing much going on. I would just continue the update on the Fox versus Midland County at all. Now, I have a copy of the motion to enforce the judgment here, if anybody would like to look at it. It follows the brief. It's kind of lengthy, but there is some interesting information in there, and you'll know about the wrangling of the parties. The case, the motion has not been sent by the court. I'm not sure why. It was filed in November. The deadlines that were identified, the agreement, the settlement agreement now are passed, and cannot be met. So the court will have to reset those deadlines at the very least in order to go forward. The, as I indicated last time, the case of Pung is sitting in Supreme Court of the United States, and that case would have a substantial impact, one way or another. It may either finalize the identification of how and what the counties must pay to a person who lost their property, or in the future, what they will have to pay for taking that property, or it will affirm the current status, which is the use of a public auction. If the latter happens, we're going forward as we have now identified it. If the former happens, there will be chaos, I think it's fair to say, because the treasurers will have virtually lost any reason to put forward. So we will see what happens. Other than that, Bridgette?
Thank you. So the Fox and Pung, that's under the treasure, right, those, those cases?
Yeah.
Are there any questions for our Civil Counsel? Thanks, Bill. I like your report. It's good, easy to follow. All right. Do we have any Commissioner update on boards and commissions, starting with Commissioner Smith?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Bone?
Not a lot to report. Midland, the Great Lakes Bay Convention Visitors Bureau, we now, Annie Rummel phased out and Brazuski's in. She's doing a good job. She was replaced internally, so she's doing a good job as a CEO, seems pretty sharp, and I think that's going to be a flawless transition for, that would be about it. That would be about it for today.
Thanks. Commissioner Shulkey?
Just a comment about the Community Mental Health of Central Michigan. That's, there's a bid out process going out for changing how the prepaid inpatient health plans work, PIHPs. Earlier in September, we had Brian Krogman here, and he was talking about that, the board last month. We agreed to pass a resolution to join. There's a new, a new entity that we think will, that might be acceptable in the bid process, that we decided to join. Instead of, right now, we're part of Midstate Health Network. While that, if the RFP goes through and there's legal things going on, whether, if, if it stays as it is, then there's mute point. If it, if, depending on what, what entity gets those bids, that may change, then totally what happens. But we took a sort of a preempt step here so that if they, the My Plan is what it's called, if that gets the, if that's one of the winning bidders, then Brian Krogman, because we acted in the way we did, then he can be on the transition board. And he's got lots of experience in that space. It will change very much how the board structure works, but for the My Plan, which will be different than Midstate Health Network, but, so there's going to be more stuff coming, but legal things going on, who knows? But at least it would be where we did approve that unanimously to put our, we thought the health, or the Community Mental Health in a better position for it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Thanks. Just follow up on Larry's comments regarding that. My concern is that the PHPs have not been doing their job in a long time. We have 10, and eight of the 10 are running in deficit, and they tend to make their decision on budgeting based on their ability to decide what they felt the state was going to give them versus what the state actually gave them. Unfortunately, I think the positioning and/or the action they just took is to leave the same people in charge. It's more of a legal maneuver versus, I think, worrying about the actual individuals providing the service and receiving the service itself. And so hopefully it all works out. It's been a challenge for our state for a long time, and so we'll see how that goes. As far as other Commissioner updates and boards, I did attend the Emergency Management sort of briefing, review of the year, and upcoming thoughts for next year, which I thought went well, as I mentioned. Recovery court coming up this week. Attended the Township meetings as well, and not a lot to report from them. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Ambrahl?
Nothing to report. Thanks.
Commissioner Dorian?
None to report, Madam Chairwoman.
All right. So for myself, the Road Commission started out with a bang. They're hoping things slow down for this season. They don't want to keep this pace. You know, they buy salt and things for the year. An interesting thing at Joyce's retirement, she's a big Kid Rock fan, and they actually had a personal message from Kid Rock for her that they played. So I, they really went out loud, as they should. It was, Joyce has been with us for 35 years, so that was wonderful. And then they threw a parade for her that night in Sanford. They had Sanford shines because her party was at the Red Oak, and it's kind of a joke because the parade was at 6:00, and we had to clear out to do that next. So the activities, the holiday activities are alive and well. Santa House was open. Founder's Walkway was open right before the Santa's, the Santa House, so that was wonderful to celebrate that. We were all very cold, and they didn't shorten their speeches, so that was kind of funny. Then I go to my Township meetings. Not every month, I go to a couple a year, and I went to the Village one, and they're still dealing with, I don't know if you know, but they need to replace that bridge, or Saginaw Road, and it is in the millions. Like, last I had heard, it was, I think, 12 million plus, and it used to be, it used to be MDOT Road, it used to be a county road, but now it's 100% on the Village to replace that bridge. And they have a very small budget because it's the Village of Sanford. So they have still been working on grants and things to replace that road. I, you know, everybody in the county uses that road, but it happens to go through the Village, so it's their responsibility to replace that bridge. So I just want to make everybody aware of that if you weren't. Now we'll move to Commissioner comments and start with Commissioner Smith.
Yes. I just wanted to let the other Commissioners know that coming in the new year, I, I talked with the Undersheriff, and I am planning to tour the Midland County Jail and just kind of get a better look at kind of operations there, I think would be good. So I just wanted to let the other Commissioners know in case anyone else wanted to join with that. Just let me know, and I will include you in the emails for trying to find a date for that. And then the only other news I have to report is that today I'm leaving for my honeymoon, so I'm pretty excited. That's all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
When is it today?
Today.
That's what I said. Don't we have a hearing or something? I'm teasing.
We better not.
Commissioner Bone?
No comment.
Commissioner Shulkey?
No additional comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Thomas?
Two quick ones. Number one, again, thanks for the United Way drive and all those that helped with that. Number two, congratulations to Chris Cantrell in IT for his award that he received, and so, was it the Jada Kennedy or Kennedy Award? So, cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Ambrahl?
As it relates to negotiations with the Corrections Officer, I've been very impressed with Scott Holzinger, Dan Tier, and Amy Randall, especially Amy Randall. I think that's a great choice to have be running the jail. Very impressed with their professionalism and what they know.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian?
Congratulate Commissioner Smith and wish her Bon Jovi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to make mention that we are going to have the award presentation today for the Service Awards for our employees, and I'm thankful that we're able to celebrate with them and do that today.
Jeanette, can I make one more?
Yes, sir.
I should, I was going to do it after, but it's easier right now. I was thinking, talk with Jim and about our Commissioner get-together, and I had said we'd get Diamond Gyms again. Was thinking a week from this Thursday if it'll work, so the 18th at 4:00 at Diamond Gyms. And if that date will work for everybody, that's the date I was going to go with, and if it won't work, we can look for a different date. So please let me know your availability. I don't want to call in, book Diamond Gyms until we know, in fact, that that'll work for everybody. And then we'll do our normal, what is it, $15, $20 gig gift or whatever it is that we.
Mm-hmm.
$20 surprise gift.
Yes. We don't want no rubber chicken.
I want the chicken.
That needs to be passed around again.
Somebody, who has the chicken?
Someone should have it because I stuffed it back in the.
So if, I'm going to go with the 18th unless I have multiple people come up and tell me, hey, I can't make it, but tentatively the 18th?
The 18th's good for me. We do have Sanford Lake Improvement Board at 7:00, but should be done by then.
I would think so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're very welcome.
All right. So after, I guess we'll recess until 10:00. We're going to start the Employee Awards at 10:00 today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, then we are going to recess until 10:00. Then we are going to recess until 10:00.
Yeah. 4:00.[494.56]
Come back in from recess and we're going to go ahead and start with our awards presentations by the Board Chair and County Clerk, please.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, welcome, everyone, to the annual award ceremony. As I call your name, if you would please come on up. After we're done with the awards presentation, the Commissioners have provided some snacks and beverages for you all, so please join them when we are done.
Bloody Marys.
No Bloody Marys, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Breakfast pizza, no Bloody Marys. The breakfast pizza's been smelling wonderful the entire time we've been in this meeting, so I'm sure it's good. So, we're going to start off with our five-year awards and we'll work our way from there. So, we're going to start with Lori Bomarito from our Family Court and Juvenile Division. Congratulations, Lori. So, next up is Heather Kinnacutt from Pinecrest. Is Heather here today? She is not. Okay, well, we'll make a pile for you, okay? Or you can come get it now, whichever you prefer. Next up, from the Juvenile Justice Center, is Cynthia Carhart-Bears. Is Cynthia here? Okay, we'll save those for Susan. I see Susan's sitting there. All right, next up from Pinecrest for five years is Michaela Crothers. Is Michaela here this morning? No, Michaela, okay. Now, some of us do have to work, right? We get that, it's all good. All right, next five-year recipient is Joseph Schuler from the Sheriff's Office, Road Patrol. We'll let Trent come and accept it on his behalf. All right, so now, we're going to move on to our 10-year awards. And first up, we have Martha Taylor from Parks and Rec. Is Martha here? All right. All right, next, we have Laura Wright from the Health Department. Laura? All right, and then, we have our very own Audin Tully from the County Clerk office. All right, how about Jennifer Boyer from Emergency Management? Then, we have Bridget Champagne from the Health Department. Still on our 10-years, we have Michael Kilbrough from Parks and Rec. Michael here? Okay, that's great, thank you so much. All right, next, we have Brandon Aikens from the Sheriff's Office in the jail. This is not Brandon, but it's okay. How about Jody Garner from the Juvenile Justice Center? No, okay, she's not here. How about Chad Thomas from the Sheriff's Office? Chad here? No? Okay.
Plenty of pizza.
Still on our 10-years, we have Michael McDonald from Parks and Rec. Is Michael here? No, but we're going to let the boss take his award. All right. And how about Jeremy Spindler from Parks and Rec? All right, now, we get to move on to our 15-year awards. First up is going to be Naisha Bryant from the Front of the Court. Is Naisha here? No? No, Naisha, okay. Jessica Tucker, I don't see Jess, she's not here. How about Adam Walser from the Sheriff's Office? No Adam today. Boy, our 15-year people are really busy, they are dedicated, that's great. And our last 15-year recipient is Joshua Quails. All right. I'm not saying that you're not dedicated. All right, so now, we're moving on to the big time, right? Now, we're at our 20-year recipients. So, first is Michelle Brickle from the Juvenile Justice Center. No Michelle this morning, okay. And this one, I'm sure, is not going to be here because I'm sure he's on a bench somewhere. Michael Carpenter, our District Judge. How about Paul Close from the jail? Is Paul here? All right, I know this guy's here because I see him. Joseph Amen from the Prosecutor's Office. Congratulations, Julie.
Hard to believe, I've been here 20 years. I started when I was 15.
Well, I started when I was 12, so...
Sheriff Department is here, we can do a truth test.
All right, so now, we are moving on to our 25-year awards. These people just couldn't figure it out and they just never laugh, so... Let's go with Charlotte Cobal from Pinecrest. How about Brandy Allensworth from the Juvenile Justice Center? No? That's okay. All right, Angela Lewis, Front of the Court. Do not see Angela here. Carrie Phelan from the Juvenile Justice Center? No? You're going to have a big box, Susan. How about Amy Caddell? Amy? No? Okay. Christopher Enda? So, as you can tell, the Juvenile Justice Center opened 25 years ago, right? Because that's where all these people are from. How about William Urusko? William, I don't, from IT? No, he's probably working on all of our problems, fixing all of our problems from yesterday. We'll keep him right where he's at, so... How about Jason Brant from the Sheriff's Office? Jason here this morning? All right. So, we're going to move right on to 35-years because no 30-year people are here. We're going to move right along and I'm going to call up Joyce McLaughlin and her and I get to celebrate this milestone together because both of us have 35-years. Although, she was the smart one and retired last week. I, on the other hand, haven't figured it out yet, so... Congratulations to you, too.
Now, I have to say something? Thanks, Ann. We really do, as Commissioners, want to say thank you for all your years of service. The diversity of the people that come and go from this building and all of our other buildings across it is, I think, a great way to see what Midland County's made of, but at the same time, the service you're giving to them demonstrates what this county's about. And so, we truly appreciate all your years of service and your time and want to say thank you. We hope you have a very blessed Christmas, a happy new year, and I believe we have pizza as soon as we adjourn, so you can feel free to come through the store as soon as I move the table as well. Thank you. I've heard that, yes.
Thank you, Commissioners Thomas. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned. The meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, December 16, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. to meet at a regular session of the Board of Commissioners and for the committees to resume their duties. Thank you. Please come and enjoy some refreshments. Bridget, are they going to do a group picture or two?